Call the meeting to order, want to welcome everybody here. Guess we need a bigger space, eh? All right, I'll let someone else deal with that, I won't have to deal with that. All right, before we get going, welcome everybody here. Like to ask Counsel Penner to bring the opening, please.
Thank you. Good evening, it's nice to see a big group here. I know most of you probably don't attend too often, but we hope that will be a good experience for you. I was recently visiting a city in Texas, San Antonio, Texas. And it came to me that when you visit a city, and especially if you've been a councillor for a few years, you do look at cities very differently. You start to look at the roads, the curbs, the sidewalks. You start to see how economic development has fared in the areas that are set aside for retail. You wonder if there's adequate housing, or if there's special services there that are being used that we don't have. So you do a lot of comparisons. One of the nice things about San Antonio is that they have developed their River Walk, which actually is a kind of a flood mitigator. The river itself, or I'll call it a river, is like three or four feet deep, so it's not a real river, but they have developed it in the center of San Antonio, and it's a beautiful space for walking, for restaurants, shops, and they've created a real tourist hub there. So those are some of the things I noticed. I noticed the impact, too, of landscape in cities. I know we try and plant a lot of trees and keep green space and keep it pretty with our flowers. So I think that's another thing, as a tourist, you notice in a city. Another great program they had was scooters. Like we've heard sometimes about biking, you can just pick up a bike and drive to your destination in the city and drop it off at the designated drop-off, and someone else can use it, too. Well, they have electric scooters. So people were zipping around all over with the electric scooter, so that was pretty neat. And I did hear, though, that the council or the town leaders are concerned because their bylaws didn't keep up with these scooters, so they're having some issues. So even good ideas have issues. They also have some of the issues that cities struggle with, like homelessness. They have retail areas that are really struggling, and they have some crumbling roads and infrastructure. But when you're a councillor, you see all of these things, and you keep looking for ideas for us, or comparisons, or maybe we're doing something better, or maybe they are doing something better. So it's always interesting to visit, and always a learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Penner, I have to say, I think all of us wear those municipal goggles often when we go to places, or, in other words, in other businesses as well, or butcher shops. If you go to another butcher shop, you're always looking at different things, or another retail establishment. It's very interesting to have that perspective. Thank you. All right, we have the agenda in front of us. There is one addition to the agenda, and that's 12A, and that's in regards to the Hanover Development Plan. I'll ask you to please add that. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Counsel Simmons, second by Counsel Swagster. Any discussion?
Those are...
Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the minutes in front of us for September 18th. Can I have a motion? You have all reviewed those already, can I have a motion, please? Counsel Funk, second by Counsel Penner. Any discussion? Anything further? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. There's no business arising from the minutes. We'll now move to 8A, and that's reports and recommendations from the city manager. This is on page 31 of council's package. Mr. Workantine.
This information, Mr. Mayor, members of council, relates to a variance file V-2017-16 and a conditional use file CU-2017-07, that City Council dealt with approximately a year ago. There is a provision in the planning policies that permits City Council to approve an extension of previously approved variance and conditional use. The applicant is requesting same. Recommendation is that City Council approve the extension for one year, as per the draft resolution at the bottom of page 31.
Thank you. Counsel, we have that draft resolution. How would you like to proceed? Counsel Fair?
I'll move to approve that.
Thank you, second by Counsel Simmons. Go ahead, Counsel Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, from time to time, runs into situations beyond our control, and as we see Mr. Schultz has here, and so we'll be sympathetic to him, and trust that he's going to recover quickly from his health issues and move on to his projects.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything further from council? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We will now move to excavator, or, sorry, the 9A accounts payable in the back of the book. You've had a chance to review that already. Can I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Penner. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Any questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor. We'll move to excavator licenses on page 38. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Swagster, approve. Second by Counsel Fair. Any discussion?
I think it's really good we approve these excavator licenses. I could talk longer on this panel.
Thank you. For those in the audience, we have never had a discussion about an excavator license in our life. Except now, apparently. All those in favor? Thank you. We have 9C, bylaw 2107, Windsor Drive Road opening. This is on page 39. This is a third reading. Mr. Workantine.
The proposed road opening and plan of works is provided in the bylaw material in the package, as are the sketches. This is a short piece of road extension that will be intersecting with Mackenzie Avenue. Recommendation is that City Council approve third reading.
Thank you, counsel. We've had full discussions on this previous. How would you like to proceed? Counsel Simmons?
Motion to approve.
Third reading, thank you, second by Counsel Fair. Any discussion?
No, I think it's all explained.
Thank you. Anything further? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. And we'll move to 9D, before we move to our public hearings. 9D, bylaw 2108, this is the purchasing bylaw on page 45. Mr. Workantine.
This information is provided to council due to a change in a Western Canadian provision agreement called the New West Partnership Trade Agreement. This is essentially a free trade agreement of sorts between the Western Canadian provinces. Within that agreement, it indicates that there's a required threshold for purchases of goods and services and construction, that above that threshold municipalities are obligated to proceed with a public tender when making purchases. Under the current provisions under the Canadian Free Trade Agreement, these threshold limits have actually been reduced. Therefore, the city administration is recommending an amendment to city's purchasing bylaw, bylaw 2108, as reflected on pages 47 and 48. Essentially, it's reducing the purchasing thresholds for goods and services to $75,000, which require a public tender, and for construction of $200,000. Recommendation is for first reading.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swagster?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. First reading, seconder. Counsel Fair, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This just simply reflects the terms under the New West Partnership Trade Agreement, and it's not a huge change, and it frankly reflects good practice that when you reach a certain threshold, that we tender out. I mean, we already do that now, and this just lowers the threshold a little bit, and tendering does tend to get the best prices.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything further from council? Anything in closing? All right, counsel, call for the question, all those in favor. Carried, first reading. Thank you. All right, now we'll move to page 5, and I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. This is in regards to variation V, 2018, 21, 305 Main Street, on page 5 for counsel. Mr. Workantine, I'll ask you to introduce this, please.
Yes, application for variance file V-2018-21 for 305 Main Street. The application is being provided jointly by both the owner of the property, being Steinbeck Credit Union Society Limited, and the applicant, Calvary Chapel of Steinbeck, Inc. Purpose of the variance application is to allow 10 parking stalls, whereas 100 parking stalls are required for a principal assembly area of 400 at a place of worship. Notices pursuant to the Planning Act have been issued. There was one piece of correspondence by email that was sent to the city earlier today, a copy of which was provided in council mail bins. With respect to the application, the information and report, including recommendations, is provided by administration. The requested variance being 90 percent, a 90 percent reduction of what is required for required parking with the proposed development is significant. Just as background for council's information, the delegation representing the applicant appeared before council in June of this year with specific requests pertaining to the proposed development. This information and background, as far as comments from administration, has also been provided in the agenda package. With respect to comments from the city planner, the concerns are that there is an existing pressure on parking stalls within the city's downtown. Administration does receive complaints from the general public regarding the lack of parking in the area, specifically related to the arena on a regular basis. The concern is that if the reduced number of stalls is provided to the applicant, it would already, it would add to presently limited availability of parking within the downtown area. As a result, the recommendation from administration is to deny the application. However, I have provided further material to city council as of late this afternoon that describes further options for council to consider if council is consideration, or considering approving the application. Option being that council may approve the application with no conditions, or secondly, that council may approve the application with conditions as determined or via development agreement, and recommendations are as listed. And that summarizes my introduction of the application.
Thank you very much. We do have the applicant here wishing to speak before that, or representative of applicant. Before that, I'll ask, is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? I'll ask for a third time, for those in the atrium next door. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to speak?
Yes, please.
All right, please state your name and your address, and go from there.
My pleasure. I'm Robert Belfour, and I live at Number 1 Beaverbrook Drive. Thank you. It's good to see you all again, and it's great to be here, and I do agree, you need a much bigger room. And when we've renovated the atrium at 305 Main Street, you're very welcome to host whatever it's...
Very good.
As long as it's Sunday morning.
Well, no. You know what, you're definitely invited to our first Sunday morning there, if you should so choose. It's really good to be back from our June meeting, and I hope that you can see that our persistence here is a sign that we really do want to do something good with 305 Main Street. A couple of things that I do want to say is, I am hoping that you will approve the variance to reduce the parking down to 10 stalls, because we do want to do something really good with that building, which has sat empty for quite some time. I'm not sure if it's two years yet, and I am horrible with times and dates, which is why I tend to hire people who are good with those things, and they save me. But because I'm up here by myself, here we go. We do want to do something good with this space, and I do appreciate the concerns on parking, especially from the hockey community. As I've been heard that this is the case, no one's approached this directly, it has dawned on me that we actually have evidence that we're willing to work with the hockey community over the parking. We recently hired a full-time youth pastor, and part of his job description was to be in the community. We wanted him to spend somewhere between 10 and 15 percent of his time serving in Steinbeck. And because he's in a hockey family, he chose for that time to be part of Steinbeck Minor Hockey League as an assistant coach for his son's team. So, you know, if anybody in the hockey community hears this, yes, I am kind of volunteering to work with you, and if you are looking for volunteers, it's kind of something we do, and we would love to be a part of their world if they should so choose. So that, I'm just saying that because we already actually were contributing to Steinbeck Minor Hockey before we even were trying to get into 305 Main Street. I'm really hoping that we can find a way to make this work. I think two of the concerns that have come up in our discussion with the city are the daytime parking, and then also what to do about the fact that it will be understood that the church will be using quite a bit of that public parking on a regular basis, right? It's not like we're hoping our church is going to shrink down to 50 people and we'll only need those 10 stalls parked one on top of each other. So as far as the daytime usage, we are pretty convinced that as long as we are communicating with our landlords, we can do a really good job of staying within our daily usage, because they'll be the first ones to know. The SCU will be the first ones to know and feel any impact of us kind of going beyond, you know, if all of a sudden we decide that Tuesday mornings is the time to grow a church, which it isn't. But if we just decided and started inviting people to come to meetings, then they'd be the first ones to have a complaint, and the most authority to deal with it, with us, so to speak. And so we're pretty convinced that that relationship in itself will do a fantastic job of being great feedback if we're overstepping and not being good neighbors in the parking area. One of the things that we've been concerned with, as we've communicated with administration, is that we're having a really hard time finding any kind of working definition with the city that will put on paper a restriction that won't actually impede the proper function of our church. So if, for instance, we came together with a promise that we wouldn't have regular functioning during the SCU hours, what does that mean? And then, on the other hand, there are times where we want to do things that involve a lot of people in the building, but don't involve a lot of parking. And two examples would be just being open during summer in the city. It's been our hope for a long time that we would be able to just open our doors and, like, hand out water bottles, and you don't hand out toilet facilities, but you do offer them to people. That would involve a ton of traffic inside the building, but not a lot of parking, because people are going to be parking all over everyone's front yards, or whatever people tend to do during summer in the city. And another instance would be this last summer, we hosted a technically international, but don't let that, don't let me snowball anybody, youth meeting. We had youth from Winnipeg, Steinbeck, Ontario, and from the great state of Georgia in the United States come up, and they were hosted at the Steinbeck Bible College, but they came to our building sometimes, and they contributed to our city. They had a four-donation car wash, and they gave all that they had collected to the Today House, just to contribute to our city. But it would be wonderful if we could have all those youth in our building during the day. And what we were doing was, we were just shuttling them around with a bus. We rented a bus for a few days, and we bussed them from locations. So here's another example of a time where there'd be a lot of people in the building, but actually not a lot of cars anywhere because of what we were doing. And so this is part of the conversation going by, if the city council so chooses to approve the variance, what kind of commitment could Calvary Chapel make that over 10 years wouldn't really come back to bite us? And it's a very difficult question to answer, and we haven't come to a solution yet. And we don't want to get bit, because we want to do a lot of good things. And it's really discouraging to be able to say, "We would love to do that, but, you know, if we do that, then our variance is going to get shot down, and we're going to get closed." Let's just explain that to somebody. Yeah, we would love to help you, but we would get evicted," or whatever. That would... So I hope you can hear what I'm trying to communicate here. We really want to be great neighbors, and not to misuse any parking or cause a glut. I would say to anybody who owns a restaurant within the 300 block or one north and south, it seems to me that people at our church love to bring coffee whenever they show up. So I would just think that business owners maybe would be happy to have the added traffic there, because we just bring people who actually do want to buy things from the neighboring community. And the other thing that we had a good conversation today, but haven't really come to a conclusion, is what to do about the anticipated use of the public parking there, and haven't come to a place where we have quite agreed to what would be fair for the future there. So with those points said, I do want to just say thank you for hearing us out. Thank you for letting us bring this variance to you. Thank you for last time, and your unanimous vote, which at least was a sign of goodwill, even though we're back here. And we'll continue to get back here until all roads are blocked and all doors are locked trying to make this happen, because we really do think it's a great idea and really do want to make it happen. So thank you for hearing me out, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Counsel Simmons?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
It's a very large building, maybe larger than what you require at this time. Do you plan to use the whole building, or just parts of it?
Right, we do have plans for the whole building. The sanctuary is a good-sized sanctuary for how many people we host, want to host. The main thing, excuse me, we're looking for is, the upstairs is anticipated to be children's ministry. We have tons of kids at our church, and they do really well with lots of space. And the space is great, because there's tons of windows, which is just healthy, but it also works really well with just providing a safe space for the children. The main floor is anticipated to be kind of split up between the necessities of, like, coat rooms and stuff like that, which we are going to all be needing a lot more of in the near future, some office space, but as well as kind of just some hangout area and some chairs, so that people have somewhere nice to sit. And we've kind of delegated the basement to the youth, because I think youth like that kind of stuff, and it can be destroyed without most people noticing. So the reality is, even with the new sketches, we can see where we wouldn't even mind having more space. It's already allocated for ministry, so...
Great, thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thanks for hearing me out.
With that, we will close the public hearing and open the council meeting.
Question for administration.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, question to administration is that in regards to a development agreement, if there is no development agreement hypothetically, does that mean that would all the other, city permits, all of those things would still be required, all the specifications would still be required, there just wouldn't be anything additional beyond the standard requirements? Is that correct or not?
That is correct.
Thank you. Further questions for administration? I have one, just for clarification. Mr. Workantine, this is a variation for the address and the building itself, not for the specific users of the building. Is that correct?
That's right. The variance application itself is something that, if council is making a decision on it, the decision rests with the land and will continue regardless of the occupant or owner.
So, for example, in 10 years, if they outgrow that space, and then it reverts back to commercial, that variance would be there, and then there could be another type of use in that commercial space.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Another question?
Another question for administration through you.
Go ahead.
Just further to the 10-year window, let's say after 10 years, the church decides it needs to grow and moves elsewhere, then if a new tenant comes in, are they restricted to 10 spaces, or can they apply for more spaces?
My understanding of planning provisions is, if there is another permitted use that would move into that building subsequent to Calvary Chapel, that the variance that council is deciding today, if it's made without any conditions, that that variance would also apply to all other permit, or any other permitted use that would happen to locate in that property. And that's the inherent risk of approving the variance without any conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you. On item two on the development agreement, it states that it will not be open to the public during hours and days of the Steinbeck Credit Union is open for business. Is that something that is covered off anywhere else there, that they can open as long as they use the 10 stalls during those times?
Mr. Workantine, let me just rephrase the question, so I understand the question, or, Mr. Fair, is that, the question is in regards to part of the development agreement that has, the draft development agreement, although there are some, you've had further discussions since. Maybe, do you want to clarify the word "open" and where that's heading?
Generally, administration would have two particular concerns with the application. If council is considering approving the application, first off, administration would be concerned about the level of use in the, that's permitted for the church generally, particularly as it would be related to the principal assembly area. The concerns from administration is that there be some type of restriction on the times that the principal assembly area would be used. And ideally, the principal assembly area use should be restricted during the times that the Steinbeck Credit Union is open for business. At least, that's administration's recommendation.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Counsel Fair? Thank you. Further questions?
Sorry, one more through you.
Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
To administration, okay. If we again go to that, that you said they would be restricted to whenever the SCU is open, that they would not be able to use those spaces, then what happens if the SCU decides to change its hours in two years from now?
Then the permitted use times that are being proposed with this application would be impacted, because the reference would be to the agreement itself. And if the agreement is subject to change, then the conditions for the application by the applicant could change.
Counsel Penner?
Through you to administration.
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to recall, we've had a few parking studies done of the downtown over the years. My recollection is that the people who do the study say there's approximately 900 parking spots within a five-minute walk of kind of that downtown arena area. Is that something offhand you can comment on? Like, that would include street parking and parking lots, correct?
I believe the number that you are referring to relates to one of the few studies of multiplex and recreation facility development plans that the city of Steinbeck has looked at over recent years. My understanding is that ballpark number is close to what was reflected. It does include all sources of potential parking, which includes on-street, and may include other private lots that are presently in the downtown area, including private.
Thank you. Further supplementary?
Yeah, I noticed downtown Winnipeg, for example, there's Calvary Temple, there's the Meeting Place, both of which I visited at times, and they both don't have parking lots. People are parking on the street. I'm just wondering if that's something that factors into a situation like this. Yeah, they may not have a specific parking lot, but there's a lot of street parking available, and I'm wondering if that makes any difference on your opinion.
I don't profess to know the details of the city of Winnipeg planning rules and regulations, other than to know that they do have many different standards as compared to the city of Steinbeck. Rather, I would prefer to comment on city of Steinbeck standards, which are applicable in this case. But certainly, the city standards that are applicable to any proposed use are developed essentially to represent the minimum standards, based on an acceptable standard within general policy, planning development policy.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counsel Funk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to administration. I wonder if administration could comment on the formula used to come up with the costing of the maintenance of the parking lot, and if it is tied to the usage on weekends or during the... during the week?
The parking, the shared parking agreement that the city of Steinbeck has with the Steinbeck Credit Union with respect to the parking lot provided for 333 Main Street indicates that the city will pay 50% of the maintenance costs. And that is reflected for the use of that parking lot during hours that, hours and days that the Steinbeck Credit Union is not open for business. The formula that is being suggested as an option is the proportionate share of that public parking that is available on that lot.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
So that is the 29.5% is what the 100 stalls is?
I can't comment on the specifics. I don't have that in front of me. Mr. Workineteen, would you like to add anything?
The proportion is the 90 stalls that is being requested to be varied as compared to the total available stalls that is available for use by the public.
Thank you. Further supplementary question, Counselor Penner?
Further to Counselor Funk's question.
Thank you.
If the majority of the week they're only using the 10 stalls, why would we calculate it based on the 90? Because isn't the 90 just for the weekend?
My understanding is the 90 would be a permanent variance that could be accessed seven days a week, 24 hours a day. The request is to vary the requirement of 100 stalls to only permit 10 for the subject property. But the expected use of the applicant, as per the application, is based on the intended size of the congregation and the number of seats to be developed within the principal assembly area. The normal expectation is that 100 parking stalls be provided.
So it's based on the norm, what you're saying is based on what the norm would be versus what they're actually using?
It would be based on what the normal requirement is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
They're not actually using the normal, that's where I'm.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Thank you. Further questions? All right, counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Fair.
I'd like to move approval of the variance subject to changing in item two, that is limited 10 stalls during the hours that SCU is open. Maybe that's intended.
Sorry, we don't have, Counselor Fair, just to be clear, not, we don't have the development agreements in front of us, but so use generalities if you can.
Okay, so just so that it's limited to the 10 stalls during the time that SCU is open and that we change the parking or the maintenance agreement to an annual fee of $5,200 a year.
Thank you. All right. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Siemens, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I think our, yes, Ms. Mayor, I think our intent here is to ensure that this building is going to be used going forward, and I think that if we don't work with this, and I don't know if anybody likes to be held hostage, but I think we don't, I don't think we really want to see this being another parking lot in town to alleviate the parking that we already have. So I think, I think this is a workable solution, and I think that this is something that will work, should work for the church, and I think it shouldn't really impede a lot of what the city as well.
Thank you. Counselor Siemens.
In favor of the motion, I think too that this is a huge request. It's a 90% reduction parking stall use on a parking lot downtown for the variation, but I think is also very unique in the fact that it is an empty building that potentially has no other uses simply because of the parking. The parking is very restrictive. Said from when we approved the zoning bylaw and the community plan, that we needed to review our downtown parking bylaws, and that's part of this discussion. Although, in this case, I agree that we need to approve this simply because it's a building that need to be, I think it's an adequate use for the building and it would, because of the off-hours, because of the different considerations that are being made by the Steinbeck Credit Union, by the Calvary Chapel, and by the city of Steinbeck, I think there, this is an appropriate way to go at this time.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Funk.
Yes, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion if I could. And that amendment would be to reduce the parking lot maintenance and tie it to usage and not to requirements.
All right. Is that a friendly enough amendment to, for you, Counselor Fair, or does it change the intent?
I'm not sure if it's a mountain that I would die on. I just, I'm not.
So I need an answer to whether it's a friendly amendment or whether it'll have to go through the whole process.
We can go through the process if you like.
Okay, all right. So you move the amendment to the motion to rather strike the $5,200 per year and move into the, just tied to the usage in general rather than requirements? Okay, thank you. Is there a second or further amendment? Is there a second or for the amendment? Counselor Penner, second that? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, my reason for this is simple. Everyone likes to get what they pay for, and I feel that they're paying for a lot more maintenance than they're actually using. And for that reason, I would like to tie it to the weekly usage and then also to the weekend usage. And I mean, I feel that that amount would be more fair for maintenance.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything further from counsel? Counselor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to speak in favor of the variation, and I have my own amendment I want to propose, but I'm commenting on that, just the request initially here, so I'm just giving my general comments.
Okay, I do have right now on the floor, the motion.
We're just, are we on an amendment discussion?
We're on the amendment right now, yeah.
Then I will hold off on that until the next.
Okay, thank you. You were winding up, I could tell.
I never do that.
All right. Counselor Fair, you want to speak to the amendment?
Yes, I do. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think to tie it to usage is going to be, end up being an administrative nightmare, and I don't think I'd be in favor. And then all of a sudden, somebody's going to start using it on Wednesday nights and Friday nights, and then you're going to have to have somebody that's policing it. I think it's best to keep it as clean as possible, and this is a usage that's been kind of indicated that they need, and so I think I'm comfortable with what the administration recommended there, so I'm not in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Siemens.
I'm a little hesitant to approve it. I'll vote against the amendment as it stands, simply because my understanding is that to rent a parking stall downtown Steinbeck today is $50 a month. So that's roughly what the cost is today. And the administration has gone through a process here of coming up with that number, so for that reason, I'll vote against the amendment.
Thank you. Speaking to the amendment?
I'm speaking specifically to the amendment, Mr. Mayor. The intent of the amendment, the intent of the amendment is clearly to make the requirement for the payment less than what's in the original motion, so I believe it is an improvement from the previous motion. I still have some concerns with other aspects in terms of the development agreement, but that will be addressed when we get back onto the motion. I will vote in favor of the amendment in case other changes aren't made, but I'll vote in favor of the amendment because I think it's an improvement over the previous requirement.
All right. This is, I can tell where this is all meandering, so way to go on my second last meeting. All right. Counselor Penner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not vote in favor of the amendment. I believe, as Counselor Fair stated, that administration needs to figure out ways to deal with these situations in ways that apply across the board. And to make this type of exception will only bring up other related problems in the future. I think it's fair, I think the cost of parking is something that the rest of Steinbeck citizens do pay for in certain ways and different ways, and it's only fair that this organization also contributes.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything closing? All right. Counsel, I think this is a good discussion. Obviously, these are some of the details we don't normally get into, but we do have the information and we are getting into them. So what I'm hearing from Counselor Funk is that he would like to see the formula changed slightly, probably reduced to actually reflecting the current reality. It is more complicated. Counselor Fair is suggesting and others are suggesting that we simplify it and let, basically reflect what administration has figured out as the cost, although it's divided over 10 years instead of one single payment. And so I'm comfortable with proceeding without the amendment. Counselor, sorry, not counselor, Mr. Workineteen, you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just if I may, request clarification before the vote is held. If Counselor Funk could provide an example as to what is intended by his reference to "based on usage," just for other understanding.
Thank you. "Based on usage," you want to?
Based on usage, they're using 10 stalls during the week and then 90 stalls on the weekend. Because I think the original, our original motion when we approved it was the weekend usage, and that was the spirit of what we were doing in the first place. So now with the amendment, where I wanted to just reflect that same thing.
Does that clarify that for you, Mr. Workineteen?
Partially. Just a question then, is this then to also consider the usage during weekday evenings?
Let me clarify if I may, and the way I'm understanding of what Counselor Funk is suggesting is that they won't need those 100 stalls during the weekdays, and so that should be eliminated out of the formula being used. Presently, that is in the formula, is that correct?
The calculation is only based.
Sorry, 90 stalls?
Yeah, the proposed calculation is only based on the 90 stalls being requested to be varied as compared to the 300 or so stalls that are available. That's the formula.
Okay, thank you. So I think it's clear what you're suggesting, I think it's clear what others are suggesting. Call for the question, all those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? It is defeated. Now we have the regular motion on the floor. Counselor Fair, you moved it. Counselor Siemens, you seconded it, you've already spoken. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just in regards to this here, I want to, there is two separate things that we're considering. The first is whether to approve the variation, and the second is whether we agree with the stipulations of the development agreement that's been, in terms of the terms proposed. I support the variation. The, I think the question we need to ask ourselves is, do we want an active, vibrant, growing church at 305 Main Street, or do we want an empty building or parking lot, which is really what's going to end up happening? Which do we want? What would we prefer? And so I'm in favor of granting the variance. I think that we've had much of this discussion before, when we already had made the accommodation for allowing them to use, you know, the weekend parking allotment that the city has in regards to the primary time when the church should be meeting, which of course is Sunday mornings, that was the intent, that's why we had, why we had given that approval at that point. And so that is the primary time when the church should be used. So, and as far as during the rest of the week, I think we also have to consider that there are a number of businesses along Main Street that were in existence prior to the zoning bylaw that don't have all those parking stalls and yet seem to be functioning just fine. And if we're going to say that that, if we don't approve the variation at least, that's the bare minimum that we need to do here, if we don't approve the variation at least, and we're saying that that building only, that no, they have to have 100 parking stalls no matter what, then basically they won't be able to do it because it's, there's only so many places you can make a deal with to use their parking, and there's not a lot of other lots right there where you can just simply turn it into a parking lot, and certainly none that the church would currently own, or anyone else that could potentially be using that building at this point. So I don't want that to be an empty parking lot. I think that would be a very bad thing to happen. Now, on the second point here, I would prefer to approve the variation without the additional conditions. And I'm going to make my case against that part of the amendment, emotion, and then I'm going to make an amendment because I'm still talking about the general motion, because this is part of the general motion. So, couple things here to consider. In terms of, just so we're clear, the additional stipulations that are put here are going on the assumption that the church has 100 parking stalls. The entire reason that we have a variation in any circumstance is there's a request for them to be allowed to have fewer parking stalls than what's required. That's how these things normally work. It is very unusual to have a situation where we're thinking about granting a variance to allow fewer parking stalls, and then we're going to put stipulations on as if they still have 100 parking stalls. I could understand possibly some of these stipulations if we were talking about a situation where they didn't get the variance, and now we have to sort of talk about how they're going to make do with 100 parking stalls that they're supposed to acquire. But if we grant the variance, we're telling them they do not have to acquire the additional 90 parking stalls. So if they're not having to acquire an additional parking stalls, why are we telling the church that they have to act as though they actually have 100 parking stalls that they are responsible for? Why are we making them pay maintenance on parking stalls that they've just gotten a variation to not have to be a part of? Let's also point out that when we're talking about whatever the number that's being tossed about in terms of the 5,200 a year or 52,000 in terms of parking maintenance, yes, I understand that it's based on a formula in terms of the city contributes a certain amount towards the parking, towards the maintenance of that parking lot. But the last time I checked, the maintenance isn't going to go up. It's not like the city has to pay more as a result of the church being there. Whether the church is there or not, the amount of maintenance that the city does is the same. I don't think the fact that you're going to have people having Sunday morning services and the occasional other meeting at the church is going to suddenly mean that there's all this extra maintenance that has to happen. And it's not like that money is going into a special reserve that would be going to create new parking stalls downtown. So I don't really see the reason why we would be, why we would be putting that in there. Secondly, I understand the intent here in terms of to say that we want to say that, you know, the principal assembly use should be not during the SCU hours of operation, but this is a case where we have to look at a broader picture here. And the broader picture is, is that we have a church that has, that operates a little bit differently than your standard business. They're not, it's not like they're open all the time to the public for, and there's like, you know, it's just a different situation. And I thought the examples that were given were pretty relevant. What if they want to be open during summer in the city when the SCU is also open, but nope, now they can't because there's a city rule that is preventing them from doing that? And actually, I'm not really aware of any case of any city anywhere that has told the church, this is when your principal use can be used. I just don't really know of any case where that happens. I realize this is a unique situation, but I think we have to look past this here and ask ourselves the question, do we really feel it is necessary for the city to tell the church that these are the, these are the hours that the, that the principal assembly can be used or not? They've already stipulated, and we know full well that SCU is very interested in protecting their parking stalls. They're, that's the landlord, they're leasing, they're not buying the building, they're leasing. I have no doubt that SCU is going to do everything they can to make sure that their parking stalls are protected during SCU hours. I don't think we need to add to it the additional arm of the city because once you put it in an official agreement from the city, it becomes very, very difficult to adapt. It's very different than simply going to your leaseholder, you know, who you happen to share the building with, who you have made your initial arrangement with, and now you also have to go to the city because you want to do something out of the box, and I didn't realize that it fit within that. So I am therefore going to make an amendment, a proposed amendment, and if it gets a second, then it will go out. I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. So my proposed amendment is that we remove the stipulations and it's that the variation simply be approved. So we just simply strike everything after we approve the variance.
Thank you. Take a breath. Is there a second? Second, Counselor Penner? Thank you. Further discussion?
I will keep this brief, Mr. Mayor. I promise, I promise.
You see what I have to go through?
It's been a fun 12 years, it really has. So, also just keeping in mind, as the reason I asked the city manager the question about if we approve this without a development agreement, it doesn't mean the church can, anything will happen there. It simply, it means that the standard rules apply in regards to building construction, setbacks, all of that still applies. We're just not putting additional restrictions. All that we're doing, if we approve this amendment and then we approve the variance, all that we're doing in this case is we are saying that we are allowing them to have stipulated that they, that they're not required to have the full 100 parking stalls at this point. So hence, I think we should pass the amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Penner?
Well, I won't repeat everything that Swagstra said, even though I probably couldn't if I tried. But the one thing here, I appreciate the need to, you know, protect the city as it were and, you know. At the same time, there comes a point when maybe there's overprotection and overregulation that actually prevents business or a situation, this isn't a business, but prevents a situation that, that makes sense for the area. That's why we have the variance process because not everything fits into our exact bylaws and policies. Hence, we have a variance option. So I concur with Counselor Swagstra. This is a. a variance option. So I concur with Counselor Swagstraw. This is an unusual situation that when we give a variance, we have so many stipulations on it. So I will support his amendment.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Counselor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't think that this amendment is fair to put the church in this position, because it's going to be perceived that the taxpayers are paying and the church is benefiting. And I don't think that that's the reputation. They would want to have, and so I don't think that, I don't think this is a proper way of doing it. And I want to get back to it. We're not, we're approving the variation for the property, not for a church. So it has to carry with the land. So I think that it's not in our best interest to approve the amendment.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Penner?
I will not vote in favor of the amendment as well. Although there are times, yes, when sometimes we have too much legislation and it does block development and usage, there are reasons that we have those regulations and policies as well. And that is, one, for fairness, and, two, to make sure that there's consistency throughout the city. There is a problem if we have no conditions on this variation. This land could be used in the future for any other use after the church moves on and grows into a larger facility. So we could have anything like a clinic, a medical clinic, we could have any number of uses that are different than this, that would be affected by this variation. I don't think that this is the right way to address this. This is a unique situation, and it requires a unique variation.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, Counselor Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll vote against the amendment as well, for many of the same reasons. This is very unique. This is, we're not going to see this necessarily again, and I do believe that there need to be rules around it. I also agree with Counselor Swagstraw on many of the points that he made, that, but it just isn't that simple. And I think there needs to be more rules and regulations around variations. And we can only do that through a development agreement.
Thank you. Counselor Funk?
Yes, I will, I agree with this, I will support this, the amendment, and because I do believe it falls into the spirit of what we want to do here, we want to bring the church to downtown.
Thank you. Anything closing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things in response to some of the comments that were made. In response to Counselor Fair, as far as that we don't want the impression that, you know, taxpayers are paying and the church is benefiting, as I pointed out, there's no cost to the city as far as, there's no extra maintenance the city is doing here that can be pointed to. The city will have this number of parking stalls before, it'll be the same number after, there's no additional cost to the city. As far as the argument that the variation goes with the property, yes. And it was kind of interesting, the arguments here about, you know, what if this goes there, what if that goes there. Yes, what if we have more development downtown? What if we have someone, after the church is done, what if another business goes there? We don't want to make it too easy for them to suddenly go there and, you know, and revitalize the downtown. That would be bad. I think we should make it possible for businesses to go there. If this, if we stick with the original, you know, development agreement, what we're saying then is that if anyone else wants to use the property, they can have the variation, but then their principal assembly, meeting area has to be closed when the SCU is open. And who other than a church would possibly ever agree to that? So it then just becomes a parking lot after that. So obviously, I'm still in favor of the amendments. I mean, if the amendment's defeated, which we'll see which way it goes, I mean, I'll vote in favor of the original motion, because it's better than nothing. But I think it would be much better with the amendment, and it better reflects what we're initially trying to do, what we're trying to do in terms of making it possible for productive use of that building.
Thank you. All right, counsel, before I call for the question, I think the question that we have in front of us really is, do we want a approval of the, do we want the amendment of the original motion to not include stipulations? And obviously, it is, these are good questions, and this is good discussion. But I think it is reasonable to limit some of the use of the principal assembly area if we are having such a large variation of the parking requirements. And I think it is only prudent to make sure that some of the costs incurred for the maintenance of the area that will be used during the off-hours is covered off by the user. And so I won't vote in favor of the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? That's defeated. We have the original motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Anything in closing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to speak to this. I think that much has been said here about us being friendly to business and friendly to churches and stuff, and I think we are. We're being as accommodating as we, as I believe we can be. And I think this is going to meet their needs, and I think this is going to be a good fit for the area. So I think we all win.
Thank you. Counsel, we have in front of us a question of a variation, and the variation will have a development agreement that covers off a few of the things discussed here today. I think what is important is that this variation really reflects the idea of mixed use. And when you look at mixing the use in that specific area, where you have some, an occupant that wants to use that area mostly during off-peak hours, I think it's a really good fit. And so it's really exciting to see that building that is going to be occupied and on off-peak hours using the area appropriately. I think it also is important that we recognize that this isn't just about the specific church that wants to enter that building and use that building, it's about the building itself. And that's how variations work. They work not with the user, but with the building itself. And so that reflects what we talked about here today. So I think it's reasonable to have some limitations on it, but the variation itself, and having that mixed use downtown, I think is appropriate. Call for the question. All those in favor of the variation? Okay, thank you. Mr. Workington, I understand you will then further the discussions with the applicant in regards to the development agreement.
Yes, that I will do to conclude the file.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we will now move to the poor folks who've been waiting for Variation V 2018-24-266, Park Road West, on page twenty. I'll close the public here, sorry, I'll close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workington, I'll ask you to introduce this, and the applicant may be outside wishing to come in, so here we go. Mr. Workington, go ahead.
This is application for variance file V-2018-24. The owner of the property is Paisley Investments LTD, and the applicant of the variance is Norm Paisley. Purpose of the variance application is that as per zoning bylaw, city zoning bylaw 2055, all required parking stalls must be hard-surfaced. The applicant is requesting that the four, that the required four parking stalls not be hard-surfaced. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file with respect to the application. The generally, building permits that are issued by the city and the terms that are contained within them, they represent by mutual agreement, development services and obligations between the city and the applicant. And in exchange for the building permit being issued, the applicant agrees to complete the required components of the project. This particular property did have its building permit applied for and issued in 2015. And as per the application that is provided within council's agenda package, the applicant is seeking council's consideration for the variance, so that he is able to deal with an outstanding permanent occupancy permit. And also notes that has not considered any other options to eliminate the need for the variance. Therefore, administration is recommending that city council deny the variance as applied for.
Thank you. We do have the applicant here today. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against, or have any questions on this application? Anyone here wishing to speak against, or have any questions? One further, anyone here wishing to speak against, or have any questions? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to speak?
Yeah, thank you.
Please state your name and your address, then we'll go from there.
Good evening. So, Norm Paisley. I'm at 266 Park Road West. And thank you for your time tonight. I didn't mean to clean out the room, but I'll be concise. We purchased the property at 266 Park Road in, I think, May 2015, with the intent to build a distribution center for our business that was just getting started. And we had a couple of concerns. We, heavy traffic, we bring in a lot of semi-truck loads into the property. And so from industrial to the property, we had to get some additional information from administration that we could, in fact, bring those trucks in. So got the checkmark. We also looked at the need to pave the property, because we are bringing in heavy trucks, not really retail, just distribution. And so we, again, with the developer, understood that we wouldn't have to do any paving. So we proceeded with the project. At the request of Three Way Builders, they said to apply for a variance, which we, you know, do somewhat reluctantly. We were apologetic for doing it after the fact. That was not our intent to proceed with the project and then not go ahead with any kind of paving. So that's, was the reason for our variance now. When I look into our planning, we actually don't have any paving on the parking stalls. We've got some paving on some sidewalks that we've done, back loading doors, got concrete, that's been completed. All of our required landscaping has been done very well professionally. So that's why we're applying, do not have to pave the parking stalls, so.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. You have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So when you did apply for the, when you signed your development agreement, that asphalt was not on there, is that what I'm hearing?
That's my understanding. Three Way did it on our behalf, and I went into my binders here of late and looked into there. We don't have any paving on the site plan for parking. We've got parking stalls outlined, but it's gravel.
Thank you.
Had you had that understanding, would you have applied for it at that point?
Well, you know, based on the bylaw, we would have needed to at that point. I didn't, you know, didn't, it was never a consideration to pave it, unless down the road, you know, we wanted to pave parking for our own, you know, foot traffic and, you know, keeping cars clean or whatever. But, yeah, we had to at the time, we certainly would have.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you for now. Question for administration. Administration, we just have some of the notes there, and it says, in exchange for the building permit being issued, an applicant agreed to complete the required components of the project. In the details that were provided for administration, was parking, paving of the four stalls in part of those requirements clear and concise, or not?
As is normally completed for building permit applications and site plan approvals, the required paving for all parking stalls related to development is indicated at time of site plan approval.
So it was communicated to the, not necessarily to the applicant here today, but by the, to the builder?
It would have been to the builder, yes.
Thank you. Before I close, would...
Administration.
Thank you. Alvin, do you have anything to add in regards to that, Mr. Paisley?
Yeah, I mean, I guess one other point to Troy's comment here. I've got the plan review, which, a copy of that would be, you know, from the city, you know, engineering, you know, barrier, free washroom, you know, everything listed right down to landscaping, zoning and planning, and it's actually, there's no wording in here on paved parking. So talks about lot grading elevations, and building plans are compiled with, the City of Steinbeck Building Inspection Department shall be notified of any change to the permit application and approve the request of change prior to proceeding with construction, so.
So, your knowledge, there wasn't any paving required, but for the builder, maybe there was some different documentation, I'm not sure. Yeah. But from yours, it wasn't there. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify. All right, I'll close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed, or have any further que, or you had a question for administration?
Questions to administration?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, when we approved that gravel, like access to gravel roads, gravel, that did not include parking? Like, it's not a gravel road, am I correct?
Counselor, that was previous, this is previous to that change?
So that doesn't...
So the old rules apply to, because it's part of the agreement. Is that correct?
Zoning bylaw 2055 has been in place since 2010. The requirement to provide hard-surfaced, hard-surfacing for the required parking on any development is a component of zoning bylaw 2055. Council has recommended amendments to the city's updated zoning bylaw, but that will only become effective upon third reading, which should be happening within the next month or so.
Right. So that hasn't changed yet because of third reading?
So, hypothetically speaking, if this were to happen after the third reading, this is a new case, would they even be required to do this paving?
Yes, because it was a condition of permit at the time of issue of permit, in 2015.
Yeah, it's part of an agreement agreed to. All right, further questions? Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny. Seconder? Seconder? No seconders? Is there another motion? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Counselor Swagstraw, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a situation that's come up, I would say, fairly regularly in the last two terms that I've been on council, when a business is on a gravel road and is gravel access, should they be required to have, I guess, a higher standard on their parking lots than we actually have on the road? So as clarified by Mr. Workington, after we do the third reading, assuming that passes, this is a situation, if they were doing it after that, it wouldn't even be a condition, I don't think, of the building permit. So I think it makes sense now that we go ahead and approve this. We've done this for other businesses as well, so I'm comfortable approving it.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not only is this, if we approve the motion, it's a reflection of the principle that we already are intending to change in the zoning bylaw, that in the rare circumstances, although it seems not so rare sometimes that this comes up, but where you have a gravel road and you have a gravel parking lot, there's not the requirement to hard-surface at that time, to reflect the fact that, you know, in terms of common sense in that regard. There is precedent for allowing this type of variation. Rental House had a fairly similar request not that long ago, that a majority of council approved, and they had gotten their permit or their arrangement prior to the rule being changed, and yet council still made the, still made the change. So I think the precedent's already been set, the direction we've set is clear. We're not changing, we're not doing anything different than what we're intending to already with the final version of the zoning bylaw.
Further discussion? Counselor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think clearly this is for stalls. It's not a lot of money. And I don't think that the money and the asphalt is the determining factor here. I think the fact that they have heavy truck traffic going there, and asphalt's not the best solution for that. If they're going to do anything, they would probably want to do concrete, so I can, I could see that that would be another case to be made with this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Penner?
Yes, I would like to clarify my reasons that I will not vote in favor of this variance. The applicant in 2015 was required to put in the paved parking as part of the development of this property and sign the agreement that would be so. And that was not done. Now that they want occupancy of this building, now they come for this variation, knowing full well what the original requirement was. I think, to me, it is, the principle is not in alignment with what I would like to see. If someone comes to us, and five years ago they did this, and now they want to change it with another variation that has changed, I think it's important to address what happened at the time, with the agreement signed at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Anything in closing?
Anything further?
All right. Counsel, there are a few principles here that... Counsel, uh, there are a few principles here, uh, that come into consideration. Number one is the whole idea of the addition, the, the changes in the zoning bylaw that are somewhat imminent, uh, which will reflect, obviously, the need for, uh, or the lack of, uh, of paving requirements, uh, when there's, they're on gravel, uh, roads. Uh, that's one principle, and I think that would reflect approval in this. The other principle that is being talked about is the fact that, uh, this was something agreed upon and that it was signed off on, uh, by the builder, uh, and, uh, the applicant who is here today, uh, what maybe wasn't aware of that, but in the end, the builder was. And so, uh, that is also one of the, an important aspect of maintaining, uh, uh, documents and agreements that were in place. And so these two principles are kind of playing against each other at this point. Uh, but at the same time, I think we're, I, for me, what I'm hearing is the applicant who's here, who's actually the owner of the building, uh, wasn't aware of that, or, uh, or seems to not have any documentation that, that shows awareness, uh, and so I'm comfortable approving the variation, uh, in light of that. All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Any que, any questions of counsel? Seeing none, I'll move to 11A, and that's the Manitoba Infrastructure Emergency Measures Organization information on page 49. Take that as information. We have a request in regards to the event, uh, being held at Friedensfeld Hall, the fundraiser. Counsel, if you so choose, uh, please let, excuse me, let me know if you'd like to attend, and we'll make sure that you, uh, we make that happen through the office. Take that as information. Uh, we have the Association of Manitoba Municipalities nominations, page 51. If you have any questions, talk to me.[1548.83][1548.83](Laughter). Take that as information. And number 12A, we have the Hanover Development Plan information. Mr. Workington?
Uh, this matter is a handout that was just provided to council, uh, prior to council meeting. Um, this relates to the Arm of Hanover Development Plan Bylaw 2417-18. Uh, city council was in receipt of a draft plan, um, earlier this year in June. Uh, there were, uh, a number of, uh, changes, uh, and policies being, uh, uh, proceeded with, uh, by the Arm of Hanover with respect to updating their development plan. Uh, there was a number of concerns, uh, and city council authorized the, uh, filing of a formal objection, uh, at the public hearing. The Arm of Hanover has, uh, further considered the city's concerns, uh, as well as other concerns registered by, uh, community and regional planning, uh, and administration has met with, uh, our counterparts, uh, with, uh, the Arm of Hanover, uh, and generally, the, uh, changes that, uh, are being suggested, uh, and recommended by the Arm of Hanover with a, uh, an upcoming, uh, public hearing, uh, address, uh, the primary concerns, uh, at that time, which, uh, is the treatment, uh, of land use policies, uh, within the transitional area, uh, which is, uh, generally, uh, areas surrounding the City of Steinbach, uh, where the city was not successful in its, uh, previous annexation application. Uh, secondly, uh, it, uh, centers around, um, the removal of what was originally proposed as the rural business area. Uh, and thirdly, uh, the Arm of Hanover has also, uh, recommended adjustments to its, uh, non-agricultural uses being proposed in the AG2 land use, uh, policy area surrounding Steinbach. Uh, based on the discussions, uh, and the amended plan, uh, and, uh, changes that have been made, uh, in anticipation of their October 10th, uh, 2018 reconvening of their public hearing, administration feels that the address, or that the concerns of the city have been addressed, uh, and would recommend that city council authorize the, uh, withdrawal of the city's objection.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner?
Move to withdraw the objection.
Thank you. Further, Counsel Simmons, seconded up? Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yes, it's, um, a pleasure, actually, that we can, um, remove this objection so that they can go forward with their development plan. And, um, some of the important things that we were objecting to have been mitigated and, um, consented to by the Arm of Hanover in discussions. So I am very pleased that we can move forward and work in conjunction with our neighbor.
Thank you. Counsel Simmons?
Uh, nothing further.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, counsel, uh, obviously, uh, working with our neighbors is really important, and Counsel Simmons and I have, have met with Hanover previously and had discussions about these, uh, challenges, and, and, uh, relationships aren't tested when we all agree, they're tested when we don't agree. And, uh, we see clearly that there's some, uh, obviously, there have been good discussions, there's been ongoing work done by our administration and theirs, and I think, uh, we need to certainly continue to strive to, uh, work together with our neighbors because we're stronger, uh, if they're stronger. And to see, uh, these changes, uh, coming about and taking away this objection, I think is, uh, is appropriate, uh, steps at this time. Call for the question. All those in favor? Cared. Thank you. Motion adjourned.